Council meeting for October 25th to order at 7 o'clock. This is a continuation of the October 18th council meeting, which was rescheduled due to absence of a forum. And all council members are present tonight with the exception of Councilmember Hefta. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Our first item up is public comments. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. There are three ways to provide comments, whether in person, via Zoom, or with an email to the town clerk's office by 5:00 on the day of the meeting. Seeing none from the town clerk's office, Doanette, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, there are no public comments.
Okay, assuming nobody in the room. All right.
Correct.
We will move on to reports, items, and comments from Mayor and council. I'll start to my left with Councilmember Barrington.
I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I think we're probably back about three weeks now. So Dr. Cog, we had a special board meeting to talk about greenhouse gas rulemaking letter. Out of that came a decision for the board to create a letter with some potential changes to the Transportation Committee, I believe. On the 8th, a few of us went to downtown Castle Rock to take a tour of their development. Let's see here. E-470 on the 14th, I had, we had a meeting which we talked about future toll rates and cash flow. We introduced the topic of a toll rate reduction to the, to the board. That will be, the proposal is a 10%, or I'm sorry, a 10 cent per year reduction on Toll Plaza A and a 5 cent per year reduction on all other Toll Plazas for a period of three years. It was met with favorable response from the board members, and it will be acted upon in the November meeting. We also talked, we had our board workshop, which went through the budget, and the high level is the projected 2021 revenues are 215 million, and in 2022, we're projecting 240 million. So 11, almost 12% increase in top line operating revenues for E-470. We're hopeful that, that the recovery continues and we meet those. That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of my liaison duties, I met with the Parker Senior Center for their monthly meeting. They are up and running and actively doing fundraisers. The membership is down, but they're trying to do efforts to increase that. Also, along with Councilmember Dyak and Rivera, we did a tour of Castle Rock and what they're doing downtown, and that's it.
Councilmember Pogue.
Just a couple of things. One, I did have a meeting with staff regarding some future improvements to roads in Parker. And then I had, before that, the week prior, I did have a meeting with staff talking about the Greater Parker Foundation. And I wanted to let everybody know that, that I'm already being told I need to have everything submitted in some grants in December. January is the last middle date, and awards will be coming out in March, so we'll have to jump on this one.
Excellent. Councilwoman Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning, Douglas County Youth Initiative, a offshoot of the Partnership of Douglas County, hosted the Douglas County Youth Congress. We gathered a half congress as usual. We had about 60, 65 students versus 130-plus as usual, but we held it over at the Highlands Ranch Mansion. Usually it's down at the state capital. It was a great event. My topic, I was the facilitator for SROs in the schools, and I had the pleasure of bringing Bree Rock from PD with me, but also Sergeant Cleveland Holmes, who is the sergeant over the SROs for Parker. And the kids had some great ideas about how to frankly, humanize the officers that are in the schools, so they're not just officers standing in the corners, but they're actually there in part of the system and part of the, part of the schools. So it was just a great discussion, and I am, I'm always thrilled with the youth congress and what comes out of that. Some great minds. And then lastly, I'm just gonna do a couple shout-outs if I could. This is hard as a Ponderosa grad, but Legend High School is on fire. A huge shout-out to Legend Softball, 5A state champions. Our very own Brooke, I just lost her last name, up in, no, Jones, thank you, Brooke Jones, up in Communications is a coach for Legend Softball, and they are your 5A state champions. Legend Football is on fire, depends on the poll you look at, but they're ranked first or second in the state. And then lastly, selfishly, Legend Band is now fourth in the state, and they go to state finals in Air Force Academy next Saturday. So Legend is doing very, very well, and very, very proud of all the kids and all the coaches over there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. Well, and not to be outdone, but I believe Ponderosa had a statewide championship this past weekend, too.
Yes.
And then I believe Lutheran had a statewide championship. So Parker is on fire.
Yes, there you go.
I shouldn't say that after last night. Parker is very good in their sports.
You're rocking.
Rocking it. There you go.
Chaperone cross-country.
Who did it? And chaperone cross-country?
Outstanding.
Even with your son out of town?
Yeah.
All right.
And they still were able to pull it off.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, I, I had some exciting, it's been an exciting week for me. Councilmember Barrington and I attended the Big Toolbox grand opening, and I will have to say, that is the best grand opening I've ever seen. Instead of a ribbon, it was a one-by-eight that was cut in half with a chainsaw provided by Still. So if you haven't seen the pictures, it was phenomenal. It was a great event. And then Director Glassburn is here from Cultural Department, spent the week at the Pace Center, I feel like, every day for the 10 days of celebrating the 10 years of Pace. Carrie, your team put on an incredible event. You know, Sarah was there every day, Laura was there every day, Diane was there, you name it, and they were there, from Artival to the dueling pianos, to the sing-along. And I think, you know, the culmination of the breakfast on Sunday, where you had probably the most dedicated of your volunteers and your patrons and the community there to celebrate was just fantastic. So happy anniversary to Pace, and thanks for doing that. And I even had to hold that darned tirannula, and I'm still washing my hands, but it was a great, great event. So thank you for that. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove the items on it for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent are introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have 4A through 4G for your review.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 4A through 4G, sir.
A second. Motion was made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Item number five, the Town Administrator's Report for Believe It or Not Fall of 2021, Please vote when your prompt comes up. and that is posted online as well as copies available here. Madam Town Administrator, do you have any comments on your report? Excellent. Look through it. It's a lot of good information. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to give kudos to Assistant Town Administrator, Beau Martinez. It was very thorough on the ED side. It was very much appreciated. Lots going on, lots of ideas in there for the businesses. Thank you, sir.
Yep. All right. Item number six, ordinances. First ordinance up is ordinance number 9.332 on second reading, and this is a continuation from September 20th. A bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement among Arapahoe County, the Town of Parker, and the City of Aurora regarding the High Plains Regional Trail Maintenance. And I believe Mr. Collins is here.
Good evening, there are councilmember.
Thank you.
Is that? All right.
It's always for the first one up. It's always.
It is. I know.
Well, and I had one that you pushed on the bottom there before.
Awesome.
So tonight, I'm here to ask for approval for the second reading of ordinance 9.332 for the High Plains Trail Maintenance Agreement. This project has been ongoing for a number of years and is a partnership between the Town of Parker, Douglas County, Arapahoe County, and the City of Aurora. It completes a one-mile trail gap that is needed to continue the High Plains Trail. There's been about a five-year effort to raise funding for this between this partners group for the planning, design, and construction, and we are now at the 100% construction drawing level for, to complete segment one. So we're, we're needing to move forward with a, a maintenance agreement in order to transfer our funds to Arapahoe County so they can actually start construction on the project. Next slide. Just as a quick overview, you can see where the Arapahoe County, unincorporated Arapahoe County, City of Aurora, the Town of Parker, and then Douglas County all come together. And then City of Centennial actually has kind of a sliver down there of roadway that goes right underneath where our trail project will be happening. So we did, we did get them involved financially to participate in the project. Next slide. So what I'm talking about tonight is segment one, maintenance agreement for segment one, and then that will affect the Town of Parker. And that is the bridge and trail that crosses, the bridge that crosses over Parker Road and is just north of the Norton Farms property. And that will be a shared agreement between Arapahoe County and the Town of Parker for maintenance on that segment one section. And then there's a segment two, three, and four sections that will be maintained by the City of Aurora. And that is also part of this agreement. And if you go to the next slide, I can kind of show you a little bit more detail zooming in. Currently, that yellow line you see on the screen is the current maintenance responsibilities for the town, and we will not be doing any more routine maintenance on that section and, and will maintain what we do now. The county will be responsible for the trail to the, towards Parker Road, routine maintenance, and over the bridge until it gets to the east side of Parker Road. And then Aurora will take on the maintenance from there as it connects over to the High Plains Trail that ends at the county line right now. So getting into a little bit more details to kind of explain the maintenance responsibilities, the Town of Parker, we won't take on any more additional costs for routine maintenance. We're, like I said, we're, we're just maintaining what we currently maintain. We will take on some costs for major trail repairs. We'll share that with the county, 50% of costs, and that's things like concrete replacement and railing replacement and drainage replacement, that kind of thing, some of the bigger things that probably will take, you know, maybe 15 to 20 years down the road before the town would incur any costs on that. And then, of course, the, the bridge and abutment repairs. And those will be shared three ways, actually. Aurora is a partner in that agreement, in this agreement as well. They'll take on 33% of the cost. The town will be 33% of the cost, and then the Arapahoe County will take on that other third. So for the segments two, three, and four, City of Aurora will take on 100% of the routine maintenance, 100% of the major trail repairs, and then, like I mentioned, this, they'll take on 33% across costs of the bridge and abutment repairs or replacement. So this kind of leads into, you know, the project is really part of our strategic goals. Supports active community by putting in a multi-use trail. Develop a visionary community through balanced growth by implementing sustainable infrastructure. We're innovating with collaborative governments to have all these partnerships with our area jurisdictions. So staff recommends that Town Council approve ordinance 9.332 on second reading. If you have any questions, I'd take those now.
Great. So council, we'll go to staff questions first. We'll open it up for public comment. We'll bring it back in for a debate, and then finally, a motion on it. So we'll start to my right. Councilmember Rivera.
No questions, sir.
Councilmember Pogue.
No questions, but thank you.
Good. Councilmember Hendricks.
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak.
No questions, just a comment that this is, this is the last link to create a sort of a long-haul regional trail, which is sorely needed and looked forward to by, by many. So, you know, to me, I'm very supportive of this, and thanks to everyone who, who participated in this.
Councilmember Barrington.
Shouldn't have done that.
I believe this is a time for questions.
Questions, yes.
Should have hit me. I got a question. I can create a question if you want me to.
I'm trying not to make contact with the attorney there.
Like that in form of a question?
So with that, Brett, for the major repairs, how, how long does a major bridge last?
I've seen them last over, you know, 30 years, 40 years, in some of the ones I've been experienced with South Suburban Parks Recreation. They're still in place, and I worked there for 30 years, and they're still there. So that's 30, 30-plus years on a bridge like that.
And does, does GOCO funding and stuff like that deal with repairs or in terms of funding sources out there that just are not us or Aurora or Arapahoe County?
If we went to do a bridge replacement in the future and GOCO was, you know, still funding bridges, that would be an opportunity to apply for a grant to put a new bridge in.
Yeah.
And we could partner with them on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
No questions.
I struggle with my chair. All right, so I don't even know what's going on. Yeah, no kidding. I need a booster seat. All right, we're gonna open up for public comment at 7:16. Seeing no one in the room. Doanette, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, there are no comments on Zoom.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the council for any opinions, debate, and hopefully, my chair will stay up.
Dyak. No, I'm good.
You want to restate your comment?
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's a great, it's a great trail. I mean, the connection has been worked on forever, as, as our Chris Hudson called it, the United Nation of Trails. It was great to hear that Centennial is an active participant, and I believe Brett had, had some, some influence over, over getting that last piece of funding available, so thank you for that. Thank you again to Mr. Trapp and everybody else who, who touched this project. I mean, it's just, it's been one of those projects that, over the years, you're trying to figure out how to, you know, how to create this last link, because it was so significant. And I think there are eight entities that have contributed funding to this, so it truly was the United Nation of Trails.
Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you. I know this was a huge collaboration, and I think that Councilmember Rivera has some comments on that.
Councilmember Hendricks.
No, this is, Parks and Rec's a crown jewel, Parker, and I know a lot of citizens enjoy outdoors, and I think this is fantastic, so thank you.
Great. Councilmember Pogue.
I'm just gonna say thank you. Parker loves trails.
That's native. Councilwoman Rivera.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is, this is, it's a, it's a final piece. It's amazing, this, this, this keystone being added to quite the, what I think back in the day started out as the Centennial Trail, has changed, and now it's the High Plain Trail, and, and as John said, you know, our very own Chris Hudson, I'm sure with others, have referred to it as the United Nations of Trails, to see it come to fruition. I think that, that Mr. Dyak is maybe cutting himself short in the involvement. E-470 is a huge player in this trail, and both he and his predecessor, Mr. Josh Martin, were invaluable in getting this done, and, and kudos go definitely there. But last but not least, he is, he didn't make it to see this happen, but Mr. Dennis Trapp, this town owes a huge kudos to him for this, but many other projects. To see this IGA, a maintenance agreement, finally on this, this is just, it to me is like the exclamation point. It's done. And I wish Dennis was, was here. I know that it started when he started here, if I remember that right, and, and it's finally done just a few months after he left, which is, which is absolutely amazing. So again, huge kudos to Dennis Trapp and, and everybody involved, and I appreciate, appreciate you bringing it home, sir. I'm glad it's done, and this is definitely gonna be an asset to the region. Thank you.
Excellent. Council, entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.332.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.332, sir.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Pogue. Please vote when prompted.
It flashed back up on my screen.
Same here.
You got it back, too?
Chris, do you just want a verbal? A voice vote? Councilwoman Rivera.
I.
Pogue.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Dyak.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Item number seven, resolutions. Resolution number 21-045, a resolution to adopt the Town of Parker, Colorado 2021 Three-Mile Area Plan. Mr. Fettig.
Yes.
And Mayor is back with us tonight. Welcome back.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm just gonna give a quick little presentation on the annual update of the Three-Mile Area Plan for the Town of Parker. So what is the Three-Mile Area Plan? So first of all, it was adopted in 2006, is when the town first drafted and adopted it. Why we do it is to be in statutory compliance with the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. So state law allows or states that municipalities can annex not to exceed three miles by any, by one, any annexation or annexations year-over-year. So this three miles in between our current boundary and that three-mile buffer is what we're looking at, planning for, have plans for, that have been adopted, and that's the area that we want to ensurely, ensure that we can adequately serve. So this plan is updated annually. I think last year was around November 2nd that it was brought before you, so I look forward to bringing this to you year after year as well. So what does the plan do? It references planning documents from the Town of Parker and nearby jurisdictions, and it complies with state law. It does not change the master plan, does not change the Parker Planning Area, alter any of the town's regulations or zoning, or obligate the town to do any of those that I had just mentioned or that are listed there. As I mentioned, it references planning documents from the Town of Parker and the surrounding municipalities and counties. So the plan cross-references specific plans for the Town of Parker, just to list a couple. Parker 2035 Master Plan, Transportation Master Plan, Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan, are just a few of those documents that, that we have in place to meet the statutory requirements of the Municipal Annexation Act. Just to the right, just the current map, just to show some of the enclave areas that exist in the town boundary. So this year, there were changes to maps one, two, four, five, and six. Apologies that some of the text there overran the box. On the first map, map one, which is annexations, we had two Parker annexations, the Bowie property at Pine Lane and Parker Road, and then Com Park Boulevard, which was a roadway annexation. And if you all remember, potentially, the Peaslee annexation, it's not on here because it was not recorded until about a month ago, and we had this in the works, and we actually brought this to Planning Commission in September, so that's why that's not on there. But it will be on there for next year. And then as of June 2021, there were no annexations for any of the surrounding jurisdictions. So map two, transportation, several updates. Arterial roads in Looking Glass, also known as Hess Ranch, were included. Arterial roads and the trails at Crowfoot Subdivision were added, and then the Belford Avenue connection has been updated on the map for the Town of Parker. For other jurisdictions, the Gar Trail Road connection to Inspiration Drive has been included. Ridge Gate Parkway reconstruction and roadways in the Canyon subdivision at Castle Pines have been included on map two. There were no significant, or there were no changes to the Significant Waterways maps from 2020, so just wanted to include that in the presentation, that we did look, there was nothing of note to change. For map four, Significant Parks, Parks, the Town of Parker, we added the Trails at Crowfoot Community Park. And for other jurisdictions, we updated, the regional park was just, previously, it was just labeled as Future Regional Park. Now we know the name, McCanta, so that's been updated on map four. Map five, Water Sanitation and Metro Districts. We added the Belford North and South Metro Districts, also added Hess Ranch Metro Districts, noted that there were updates to Cherry Creek South Metro Districts four through 11, and corrected the name of South Gate Water and Sanitation District. Previously, it was just listed as South Gate Water, so we added the AnSanitation just to be consistent. And on the final map, which is county zoning, there was one change. Albert County rezoned, rezoned an area just to the far eastern extent of our three-mile area from agriculture to agriculture residential. So those were the significant changes that have been made to the maps. So recommendation, staff brought this forward to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Therefore, staff recommends Town Council adopt the 2021 Three-Mile Area Plan update this evening. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, sir. So we'll go staff questions, public comments, any debate on the topic, and then come back for a motion. So Councilmember Hendricks, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue.
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Rivera.
Just a clarification to ask a redundant or layman's question, if you could. Could you bring up just a map of the three-mile area? There are, this is just a plan to state that if something was to happen, we could. It doesn't not mean that we're planning to annex everything in the bubble. So I know as a citizen, to see this, like, wait, what, what? We're growing, we're annexing Centennial, and you know, et cetera, and we're going into Albert County? That is not what we're doing tonight. We are just stating that this is what exists in our
And if you all remember, potentially, the Peaslee annexation, it's not on here because it was not recorded until about a month ago, and we had this in the works, and we actually brought this to Planning Commission in September. So that's why that's not on there. But it will be on there for next year. And then, as of June 2021, there were no annexations for any of the surrounding jurisdictions. So map 2, Transportation, several updates. Arterial Roads and Looking Glass, also known as Hess Ranch, were included. Arterial Roads and the Trails of Crowfoot subdivision were added. And then, the Belford Avenue connection has been updated on the map for the Town of Parker. For other jurisdictions, the Gar Trail Road Connection to Inspiration Drive has been included. Ridge Gate Parkway Reconstruction and roadways in the Canyon subdivision at Castle Pines have been included on map 2. There were no significant, or there were no changes to the Significant Waterways maps from 2020. So just wanted to include that in the presentation, that we did look. There was nothing of note to change. For map 4, Significant Parks, the Town of Parker, we added the Trails of Crowfoot Community Park. And for other jurisdictions, we updated, the Regional Park was just, previously, it was just labeled as Future Regional Park. Now, we know the name Macanta, so that's been updated on map 4. Map 5, Water Sanitation and Metro Districts. We added the Belford North and South Metro Districts. Also added Hess Ranch Metro Districts. Noted that there were updates to Cherry Creek South Metro Districts 4 through 11, and corrected the name of South Gate Water and Sanitation District. Previously, it was just listed as South Gate Water, so we added the Ann Sanitation just to be consistent. And on the final map, which is county zoning, there was one change. Albert County rezoned an area just to the far eastern extent of our Three Mile area from agriculture to agriculture residential. So those were the significant changes that have been made to the maps. So recommendation, staff brought this forward to the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Therefore, staff recommends Town Council adopt the 2021 Three Mile Area Plan update this evening. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, sir. So we'll go staff questions, public comments, any debate on the topic, and then come back for a motion. So Councilmember Hendricks, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue.
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Rivera.
Just a clarification to ask a redundant or layman's question, if you could. Could you bring up just a map of the Three Mile area? There are, this is just a plan to state that if something was to happen, we could. Does it not mean that we're planning to annex everything in the bubble? So I know as a citizen, to see this, like, wait, what, what? We're growing, we're annexing Centennial, and you know, et cetera, and we're going into Albert County? That is not what we're doing tonight. We are just stating that this is what exists in our area. This is what we would be responsible for if we had to, and et cetera, et cetera. This is not a plan to annex. It's simply a state of record, correct?
Yes, that is correct. The Three Mile, it just buffers the existing municipal boundary by three miles. Yeah, there's no intent to annex any properties or any such matter. It just gives us the ability to entertain if someone, a property owner, came forth to annex that property, right? We're in compliance with state statute, and we've looked, and we've planned for those areas.
Thanks, Brett. Perfect.
That's a good point. Mayor Jackie Malley just called. She's concerned we're taking over Loon Tree, so.
Not yet.
Not yet, yet. Councilmember Dyak.
No questions or comments.
Councilmember Barrington.
No questions. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So now, we'll open it for public comment at 7:27. None in the room. Do we have anybody online?
Only staff.
Okay. Jackie Malley's not lurking out there. Tara Radloff, okay. All right. So we'll close it for public comment. Council, any further comments on the issue? I'll just start down here.
No, sir.
Josh, Cheryl, Todd, John. Then I'll entertain a motion on Resolution number 21-045.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 21-045.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Please vote when your prompt hits.
Let's see if this goes through. It took a while to come back up.
And that motion passes unanimously, 5 to 0. With no other business before the Parker Town Council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Your last vote of the night.
Oops.
Oh, wait a minute.
Never mind. I hit the wrong one.
You vote now?
But now it won't let me change it. I didn't hit save.
I gotta get back in.
Aye.
Please throw it to a tie.
Aye.
I can't even get back in.
All right, Councilwoman Pogue.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Hendricks, Dyak, Barrington.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and we're adjourned at 7:28.